Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Peshal?
Rosa Ditch?
Eric.
Barganger?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Whitso?
Eric.
Fisher?
Here.
Spirols?
Here.
Butke?
Eric.
Henler?
Yes.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire. In the United States of America. To the government of which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, free, and just for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council for stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will go on to item D. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty eight, twenty twenty meeting? Motion by Mr. Henler. There's second, second by Mr. Butke. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire? Peshal?
Yes.
Rosenditch?
Yes.
Barganger?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spirols?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, staff updates. Possible repurposing of the police department vehicles for use by other city departments. Presented by Dan Connect.
Thank you. Aldrin Barganger had suggested earlier that staff look at opportunities to repurpose PD vehicles when they're ready to come offline at PD and then look at other city uses when that might be available. Thought it was a great suggestion. And some of you might recall that we used to do that years ago. We had Crown Vix and then later on the blue Chevy Impalas that were used for our inspector vehicles as well as some of our engineering cars. I think what we learned at that time is that some of those vehicles had higher miles on. The maintenance history didn't fare very well for us once we took them over, so we kind of discontinued that practice. And then we went through a period of time where we purchased used vehicles for those folks, the inspectors and engineering vehicles off, used vehicles off of the local lot here in town. And that's what some of our inspectors are using yet at this time. And then more recently, we started purchasing these types of vehicles through the state bid process, which has offered us some pretty competitive pricing on new vehicles. And that's what we've seen come through the Board of Public Works most recent. But I thought that the suggestion from Aldrin Barganger to revisit this opportunity makes a lot of sense. As he pointed out, the PD vehicles now have changed over to pickup trucks and SUVs, and those are typically a little bit more rugged. There's typically some good life left in those vehicles once the PD is ready to cycle them off. So when we started down this path, I thought it would be fairly simple to match up the PD replacement schedule on one side and replacement needs of other city departments on the other side and kind of mesh things together and figure out which vehicle is going to go here and which one's going to go there. But after talking with Rick and Pat a little bit more about that, it's probably not quite that simple. They know that there's always going to be vehicles replaced each year, but they don't really know which one it's going to be until they get to that point in time. Vehicle, for whatever reason, may need to get replaced sooner. It's been in some accidents or has a high maintenance history. Other vehicles sometimes get repurposed within the department. So what we kind of changed our game plan on this a little bit and instead looked at which candidates of other city departments would be likely vehicles for replacement by a PD vehicle. And we came up with about ten or twelve vehicles that would fit that category. And again, it's the inspector vehicles, engineering department and so forth, where they don't have a specific utility need, but just a vehicle of some sort. So I think our strategy going forward would be that when it comes time to replace those ten or twelve vehicles that are on our radar now, we first look to the PD to see what vehicles they have available in that coming up year. Determine if those vehicles can make, meet the needs of these other departments, what the purchase price would be versus a new, et cetera, and then bring a recommendation to the Board of Public Works to use those. We won't be able to lay out a strict game plan right now, but just know that we will look to the PD first for these for these types of vehicles when that time comes. In fact, we do have one in the twenty twenty one budget that if it's budget request, so that if it would stay, it would be a good candidate for this, so we might have a chance to try that out in twenty twenty one. So with that, I just opened it up for any questions, but that's kind of our game plan here.
Any questions for Dan? See, Adam, do you have your hand up? Adam, did you want to? I thought I saw your hand up. Did you want to say something or?
No, I did not. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Item E, mayor's comments. Boy recognition, Todd Brennan, the street department. August twelfth, nineteen eighty-five, thirty-five years. And Alexander Mitchell with the police department, August twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, five years. I gave an update on the coronavirus a while ago, and I just wanted to give a brief updated one. And this information that I'm going to read off right now is straight from the state website. The Wisconsin Department of Health Services has a tremendous website, and they update it every day at two o'clock, and it really does give a lot of great information. As of today, there's, there have been over a million tests, a million, seventy-six thousand oh sixty-two tests taken. Of that, over one million were negative, but there are sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five positive cases, which is an infection rate of five point seven four. Eighty-three percent of the folks have recovered. However, there are still ninety-three hundred and five folks with the active virus, which is about fifteen point one percent. Sadly, a thousand and six people have died, which is a one point six percent death rate. Currently, right now in the state, there's three hundred and sixty-five, three hundred and sixty-four people hospitalized. Of that, a hundred and eleven are in the ICU. In the north central region, which includes Wood County, there's a total of twelve counties involved. There's a total of sixteen people hospitalized, and of that twelve are in the ICU. To bring it down to Wood County, Wood County also has a tremendous website that they put on. Normally, their stats are updated by four o'clock in the afternoon. Both of these websites you can access from our, the city of Marshfield website. And just in Wood County, there's been a total of over nine thousand tests, nine thousand two hundred and ninety-six. Of that, three hundred and twenty-three were positive, which is an infection rate of three point four seven, and sadly, there were two deaths in that. Some encouraging news. In the city of Marshfield, there's a total, there have been a total of fifty-one cases. And of that, there are one to five active cases, and that number has remained the same for, I think, the last week. You might have noticed that in Wood County, there has been a bit of an outbreak, and if you look to our friends in the south part of the county, they've got some serious issues going on there, which shows how viciously this thing could take place. If you open up from the city of Marshfield to the Marshfield Unified School District, there's been a total of seventy-eight cases. However, same thing, there's one to five that are active. So in this whole area, there's, we don't know if it's one or we don't know if it's five. And so, but those numbers have stayed pretty consistent now for the last ten days or so. Again, these websites are tremistic, are tremendous. So just remember, if it is mandated right now, when you go out to, to wear your face mask, that's a mandate from Governor Eaters, Evers. Always remember to wash your hands. If you cough or sneeze and you're not wearing a mask, cover your mouth. If you're sick, stay home, and if your kids are sick, stay home. And again, I know I said it before, but wash your hands a lot. This is a very, very nasty virus. That's it for me. Item G, council comments. Any, any comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll go to item H, reports from commissions, boards and commissions. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place on file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda? I saw a motion by Mr. Fire and a second by Mr. Peshal. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Peshal?
Yes.
Rosenditch?
Yes.
Argener?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yeah.
Spirols?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K, presentation, street division, space needs report, introduced by Dan Connect, Director of Public Works.
Good evening again. Very pleased to have with us tonight Norman Barrientos with Barrientos Design and Consulting. Norman has done a tremendous job of a space need study for our city garage property. We kicked off this process back in February. We've had several meetings along the way, put together a lot of data. I think you'll find the report from Norman very informative. And he'll have some options for consideration and a recommendation at the end. We're not looking for any action tonight. Once we're finished with, with tonight's meeting, we'll post the full report online, or if we prefer to have a hard copy, we can get copies out to the council. And then we'll schedule some follow-up discussion coming up in future meetings. So with that, I'd like to introduce Norman Barrientos.
All right, yes. And good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much. Architect and owner of Branch Design and Consulting. We came on board, and one thing on our, my personal background is I specialize in the design of fleet and service garages, particularly city and county public works garages. And designed, planned over seventy garages, so this is our specialty. What we've done is applied our methodology and our research standards, other city garages. And our work, as you'll see, was scoped out. There is to do a space needs analysis by looking at your fleet and your staff. And then to get used to this thing here. Our space needs assessment, which you'll see our charts that we took in a lot of data on your fleet and your staff and your materials. And then a conceptual design for four different approaches to try to stay at Second Avenue, a second street site. And then we did do a hypothetical, what if the city relocated and what would that look like in Boston? A few background pictures of what goes on in the garage. The garage has been built over many years in the forties. There's been three main additions to the main garage, and then you have various old storage buildings. But in the main garage, you have, does this have a pointer on it? You don't see that. Okay. Oh, okay. There we go. You see my? Okay, so that is welding and truck repair, vehicle repair activities going on in here. This is vehicle storage in the older, original barn, and then part storage. These are parts of some of the main functions that go on in the garage. So repair, welding, part storage, parking, various vehicles and construction of vehicles. At the top, you're seeing a truck wash stall. It's really just sized enough for smaller vehicles. Salt brine is stored inside. Your administration and the supervisors' offices, and then the locker rooms, assembly, their equipment areas are all go into this building. So that's the main garage, so the functions that go into that. Then another big part of the garage is the yard functions, and that's integral part. Really, when you design these buildings, it's both the yard and the main garage are working as one unit. You have, over time, built cold storage buildings. Actually, this one is heated. So you have some larger trucks in here, which you're seeing on this side. And then you have a salt shed and a cold storage building here where you have more seasonal older equipment, construction equipment in the cold storage building. And that's typical in a yard to have various, we call cold or tempered storage, because certain trucks don't need to be heated all the time, or they're switched out summer, winter activities for construction or plowing. Yard, a key thing is fueling, which is citywide, and getting to that is key, and fencing it off and security. There's lots of storage. These photos are taken in the winter, so there's not a lot of yard storage going on, but typically in the spring and summer, there'd be a lot of culverts or stockpiles of things stored on site, and the trucks have to either drive around it or stage and pick up items such as a field tractor that's, that's going on to the back of that trailer. You have a remote sign shop off on Oak Street that was the old armory, and that has a sign shop in front and has both sign and traffic control storage back. Just some context photos. We're very sensitive and thoughtful about where you're expanding on this building, because the proposal is a much larger facility, building bulk-wise height, and then a lot more yard paving. So the context that we have is off of, here is off First Street. There's a police storage unit. We talked to her, started about using this more as an option as to get to other storage and fueling activities. You've got your rec field to the south and west, and then right now, this is a driver's academy. I think it's Pierce Properties owns this in your, your triangular corner. And then you're across from other industrial uses, but further down, you have your central business district. What we did is took the city's GAS information, which has a lot of great information for us, planners, roadways, utilities, trees. But also, we wanted to see what context we're designing in. And you can see your, off to the right is your central business district, and then off to the right, I'm sorry, left, is your rec field. And then that little snippet there is actually the armory that was inserted there, just to show it, that shows up. I have some aerials to show the context. I'm going to zoom in. We did look at utilities, and I'm not going to get deep into that. Looked at the grading. There is a bit of drop, about a six-foot drop across the site, which we believe is doable for new design, workable. Moving in, though, here you can see the buildings. The main garage here is in two sections. See the more vaulted roof from the forties, and then this has two additions. We're going to discuss how that has been outgrown. There hasn't been any significant work on it done since the seventies. So it's, it's got a good, well, overall, this building has a good seventy years of use. And so I think at this point, the city's asking, you know, can we fit more in here? Can we do more with it? My scope did not include a facilities condition assessment, so that, that was not, we were not asked how much is it going to take to repair this or modify it, renovate it, upgrade it. That was not part of this scope. All we just looked at is what space you need and how can we fit that space and yard activity on this site. Other activities are the fuel station, which at this point is laid out, so the whole city fleet can come and go quickly, not go into the rest of the yard. It's very important, and these are to segregate users, including vendors or other city fleet. We really want the yard to be just for the streets or other DBW divisions. A lot of heavy equipment, a lot of stockpiles, fuel. So a lot of asset control needs to be maintained on these sites. And then a lot of heavy trucks are driving through. Right now, you've got a good amount of clearance for trucks to come through and turn the corner. One thing I look for in a yard is tight corners where we have blind spots. And what I hear from other yards is when you get tight corners, is we get near accidents, is two trucks or even a private vehicle and a truck come around the corner, or a truck comes around a parking lot, doesn't see a car backing up. The street access primarily off of Second Street, although there's access off of Veterans and access off of First Street, and then that's off of the cider. The current shop, as I said, is built into two sections. The original one, which is still being used as such, although you've inserted a salt brine system here. It's not the best place for it. It's taking a parking space. It's not the best place for it. It's taking a parking space. And then you have your service area, repair garage, welding, Bosch bay. And then the admin and the, the crew area is up here and up, uh, here and upstairs in an inaccessible ADA non-compliant lunchroom locker room area. Um, so, um, I'll just say that it's non-compliant. And then your parts distribution for here. I'm going to just briefly talk about some of the key programmatic issues or components of this. And the fleet is the biggest one. We. Okay. I'm going to zero in on, uh, one thing we look at is your fleet composition. And you have, uh, the way we do it, we divide the world of trucks into four types, heavy, medium, light duty, and then field equipment that are basically towed. Your heavies being your plow trucks or haul trucks. Uh, they have a certain size. They may be outfitted with plows. Uh, we have a standard parking stall and also backup width for them to get in and out. Our medium trucks, single axle trucks, utility trucks and the light duty, the crew cabs. And then the various field equipment, which a lot of it is towed onsite, like in that trailer I showed. I show you the stall size. We tabulated all those. Uh, in a heated building, we need 51 stalls. In tempered, or sometimes we call it cold storage, is 52 stalls. And so there's a total of 105 vehicles and heavy equipment that's being stored at this site. This is a graphic we do to help everybody see the composition of icons of the trucks and construction equipment. So that's the fleet just all parked out in hypothetical parking lot. Um, in the bottom, you're seeing, uh, I was told that you're anticipating two future trucks. And, um, they would be haul trucks or heavy duty trucks. Look at your staff. Uh, there's four administrative, five in, uh, vehicle and equipment maintenance, uh, like your mechanics. And then the field staff, the crews, 21. There's some seasonal staff, about 10, and also three future. So a total of 43 at its peak in the summer. Then we went, worked with the staff and listed all the rooms, all the bays that would be needed, parking stalls. Uh, we've recommended six repair bays, four heavy duty repair bays and two light duty repair bays, and then a welding bay. Uh, here is a graphical representation of that program, the biggest being the heated garage. And this garage would allow the trucks to drive down an aisle, park at 45, park with their plows and side wings, sanders on, and allow the crews to walk between the trucks and not bump their heads on a wing that's sticking out. And, uh, there's a truck wash that would be a drive-through versus the little hobby that you have now. And then starting the top, bringing the sign shop over from Oak Street. Uh, welding and repair, that would be the six bays, part storage area, and then admin and crew area. And the relationships that we show here are ideal. Way the flow of work is, we want this design to augment your operations and cut down wasted time to get to parts or allow people to see each other or see their parts or see vendors coming in. So, uh, that was all discussed and worked out so that if you went ahead with this, you'd end up with a layout that allows, uh, very few people to be on there to see a lot of activity is how we like to approach this. And then the yard is, as I said, is important. Uh, there's a cold storage building that takes all that light, uh, that seasonal equipment that I talked about. And, uh, there's 42 of those pieces. And some meeting pieces go in there as well, salt shed and the, uh, we're looking at some structured concrete bins. So when we look at what you have versus what we're recommending, the existing, overall, the main garage is 26,000 square feet. We're recommending 74. A lot of that is in the parking. You look at the existing parks, they're on 11,000. We have, when we tally up all the trucks and park them, lay them out, it's 44,000 square feet. There isn't a truck wash right now. The welding shop right now that you have, repair garage also is, uh, very tight. So that's, uh, increase of 5,000 square feet. And then arts is about the same, actually, I think same. The sign shop, well, um, the sign shop in this program doesn't exist here because it's over at Oak Street. Crew quarters, uh, that needs, uh, more area and admin is a little more. But the most of this is in the, uh, repair garage. I'm sorry, the parking garage and some degree, the, uh, repair garage too. A lot of it's your larger fleet, larger trucks and getting more specific equipment in place to work on the trucks. And you've added things like salt brine and, uh, you've added a truck wash stall over time. So we looked at different options on Second Street and I'm going to go through four options at Second Street. And then we looked at a hypothetical anywhere, well, the ideal, and that's the fifth one. So how about, actually, I'm going to show and I'll talk about the points later. So what we, uh, have thought about in our options, try to use as much as the existing building as possible in this. So what you're seeing is the heavy black is we would use half of the existing garage and convert that into bulk storage, part storage and put the sign shop in there. And then move out welding and admin and arts, crew areas and, uh, build them, um, off to the side here and in place of the old one. We have to move the fuel station. So that's actually up here. And, uh, as we discussed this with, uh, your staff is, we realized we're going to have to do this in phases because they can't just go offsite and they could off for a year or so and rent somewhere. Ideally, you want to keep the operations going. And at best maybe have them hop across the yard into another building temporarily and then hop into the new building. So, um, this is just the beginning of a, of a construction phasing plan. It, it's not all, uh, totally worked out, but it's, you're starting to see that you're going to have to hopscotch around to fit these in. And that actually may affect the design. So in this case, we're trying to build away from these cold storage buildings. They could stay and then build a line here that would go up. And then the next phase, we knock those down and build the parking garage. And other things, um, you see like the salt shed, which is here, that would go up here. And we have a lean to on that to store things like plows and frames off the side of the salt shed. That salt shed would be bigger as well. Those are the structured bins. And then over the, uh, spring, you get culverts or stockpiles over here. Um, the fueling station now is mainly accessed off of First Street. So by that police storage shed coming through that gate. As we discussed this on all the options, uh, the crew brought up to me, there's a railroad crossing across on Veterans Parkway. So when trucks come out of here, if there's a train crossing, it closes veterans and they get queued up. They get backed up on First Street. So I'll just, um, I hit most of these points here. The, um, we weren't able to get the full amount of building space that the program had established. And, um, we're not able to get a cold storage building here. Which you'll see we, we did in the other ones. So that's what's lacking in this one. So, uh, here's the big thing of the cost. I'm going to start talking about the costs, 13.1 million. And, um, that's, that's option one. Option two, let's take, we took a different approach on that. We're trying to save usage of this, at least temporarily, of the existing garage. Crews can be in here, uh, but building in phase one, the welding and repair garage is a separate standalone. And I've done that at other shops where actually that's all we do is we just, we're, we build a repaired garage and get it out of the old one. Because it needs to be higher and wider and have a lot more equipment. And it's a, it's a good first step for a lot of municipalities and their yards. Um, it is in a tight corner for trucks to Y turn back out of here. It's a little shoved into that corner. Um, in this phase, you could use those existing metal wood buildings. The feeling would have to move up here though, to get parking in here. And then in the next phase is what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to work with that angle that you have around the, um, I think it's Pierce Property. And, uh, so this one, we're trying to say, well, if all the cars and trucks come through first and then drive through and then either go out veterans or drive through and go out second. So, and we're trying to work geometrically with this angle here. So we ended up with this angled building. And, uh, you would still keep half of the existing garage, welding to be here, admin be here. And as we talked about this, the crew started thinking and realizing, well, once the mechanics here in the arts area, there, where the POs are getting caught, the admin, where they're doing the bids and specs are over here. And right now they're right next to each other. So, uh, there is a, um, separation between two interactive groups. And then they also thought the, um, when a vendor comes on site, where do you go? Well, you come off second. Well, the admin office is up here. You got to drive through this site and you're going to be driving by the trucks and driving by, um, the salt shed, perhaps they're loading salt here. This is tucked into a tight corner. Uh, so as we looked at this, there's a lot of conflict of interests, uh, conflict of traffic patterns that are coming onsite. Let's say a vendor is coming on and the trucks coming in. So we, we think this is, uh, has a lot of conflicts and tight circulation. It's also got some tight corners here to turn around and get out or get around here. Uh, the salt shed is in a very tight corner for loading when you get a loader in there to load a truck or even for a semi to load the salt. So it's not an ideal situation. And, and the fueling relies on First Street. So all city fleet to come through here and then either drive through and get out on veterans. So, um, that one is 15.1. Oh, um, the other thing on this, there isn't a lot of bulk site storage. So the culverts, the stockpiles, even just where they stage, pull out a trailer and load up something. There isn't a lot of room or any room. We did start tabulating that in our, um, you know, off the side, the yard store is 10,000 square feet. I think we recommend closer to 70,000 square feet. There's also, uh, other things like, uh, where do you allow this, uh, shove up the snow and store it? There's minimal s- snow storage on here as well. It's a very tight site on that. So we moved on to three A, three B and, um, this approach is to, um, get a cold storage building in here and put that at an angle and then build the main garage here. So the trucks would have to come off second and pull around here. It's a little bit of a tight corner. It's 80 feet. We prefer 100 feet for a truck to come in and around. The smaller trucks could make this. I was thinking the bigger trucks would come in and make that. We've got the salt in a tight corner here for loading. Uh, I've got the trucks going by personnel vehicles. So there's potential backup here problems. Uh, this is kind of a tight corner too, off veterans. They do an S and then come in or they might S and come in that way, drive through. And then when they come out, we really, at this way, want them to come out first. So you'd have a lot more traffic coming out first. That or the, and I wouldn't recommend this, they pull around and come by this very tight corner here where we have parking and the sign shop and about 30 feet of clearance there, which I think is another potential blind spot here, two trucks coming at each other. Uh, we're very close to the street front. Um, this is going to be a big building. This repair garage will be 35 feet high. And so we're, we're going to have a, a very large industrial building presence on Second Street there. Uh, there is not a lot of, uh, sar, um, yard storage for stockpiling, snow storage. So we fit the building there, but we really squeezed out the yard space this. And, um, we, we discussed, uh, a phasing plan of trying to reuse some of these civilians in the meantime so they could stay here and then jump around. Uh, this cost is about 16 million. We did look at three B. One thing I don't show here, but it's in my report is we looked at the idea of putting a second floor above crew and admin so you could bring in more D W engineering admin. So it just would add some stairs and an elevator in here. You'd have a second floor here. Okay, so option four is to looking at buying new land. And, um, as we looked at the site, we kind of started coveting this corner here and, uh, these two parcels. And like, oh, that, those would really square up the site. And most yards really just want to be a rectangle. It's easier for the trucks to turn. You can see how that angled option created some odd turning. And this is phase one, phase two, I'll talk about that. This would have the trucks again, coming through the crew area, parking and then turning in. It's a single drive aisle. So it's a longer building. We had two drive aisles, the other one. It allows a little more space if you're a little more s- storage and stockpile area. We still have a salt shed and a tucked in a corner. The vendors can come here to parts, the crews or any city fleet can come here to, uh, get their vehicle serviced here and back out. Sign shop is not cornered in. And then the, uh, the fueling allows other D, non-DW crews or vehicles to come on site, circulate, come around and, and, and come out. There's actually a fence here that I have shown there. Uh, we've got a cold storage building. Uh, we minimize usage of the First Street. You don't use it for storage. We're not using it for getting in the main parking garage, but we are using it for, uh, cold storage, which is a lesser traffic item. So most of the traffic is kept on and off of second at this point. Of course, this has a cost to it. Um, I did not, and that was not part of my scope, to figure out the real estate costs. That's something though, if the city wants to move ahead, that we, you'd want to look into on that. Uh, one thing as an architect I started thinking about is, okay, you add these acres now and we have a lot more paving. We have a big building here is for the city to think about your urban planning vision, your master plan is, do you want this larger industrial building with a lot of pavement and a, and a cyclone fence around it now on your, next to your recreation complex? And getting, you know, rather close to your CBD. That's, that's obvious for you to consider. Uh, but if you went forward and you started talking to your city planning, uh, those, those things start coming up. I, um, this is a, the floor plan, I, for that, option four. I, it's just some of the, the things about this that we're trying to do is like the diagram plan. I'll start with the big gray box being the parking. All the trucks are in there. Uh, one dr- minor drawback is we do have to double stack some of these smaller vehicles. They have to stage themselves out. Otherwise trucks all drive through and, and out. The repair garage is here and you could pull through some vehicles from the repair garage into parking. That's, that's a good thing. Or they back out. Uh, we have a welding shop. Again, you could have access between welders and the auto mechanics or even parts between the two, but you do want to isolate welding because it has a lot of noxious metal fumes in it that are generated. Uh, the sign shop is off on its own. And then parts is feeding, obviously, equipment, vehicle parts to the mechanics. And then they can feed, uh, field tools, applications, P P E to the field crews. And then the locker rooms here and then the admin up front. So that's the general idea on that. And, let's see. Uh, may I should go over the, uh, the square footage on that? This, uh, is close to the, uh, we recommended 75. We got close to this one, uh, with the cost, uh, the, uh, square footage on that. Just some, we did some preliminary architecture, we get a sense of the height and the largeness of the building. And then the last option I'm going to discuss is option five, uh, hypothetical site. And so taking the program for building and yard, what we recommend. And we came up with a 10 acre site that, uh, ideally would be in a corner. That would be great. You could get access coming in one way and then drive through 90 degrees out. Uh, you can get in that corner, get the admin, get the public, the crew parking in that area. Uh, that might be more of a, a presentable face corner of a, of a yard with the lower, uh, admin area. And then, uh, drive through parking, parts, welding, very similar to what I just showed you. A truck wash, a drive-through one. And then, um, our assault shed that has ability for a semi to come up to it and dump its box as well as your payloaders to be moving in and backing out in a Y, loading a haul truck and letting them, uh, pull through. And then a cold storage, which would allow not only trucks to come on site and pull through, but actually if they, what, what might happen in the morning is the crews would go to their lockers, get their work orders, get some P P E and parts, jump on their trucks. lockers, get their work orders, get some PPE and parts, jump on their trucks. Uh, and then they might pick up a trailer and then run through cold storage, pick up a generator or an air compressor and then pull through and out. That's a pretty typical sequence in the morning. And, um, at night they might dump that and then go through the truck wash, come through, or they might, uh, dump their salt, um, and come through. So, and then we have a much more ample area for stockpiling, uh, the soils, the materials, the, uh, bins that could go on here and then leave some area for future and retention on. So, um, it's pretty much the same floor plan as the other one that an option four, I'll just skip that for time. Okay. So the, uh, we did compare the four options in this chart here. And, uh, recommended is pretty much option five. It's the target. So you can see the, um, some of the highlights on this is, uh, option one has 72,000 square feet, so it's short, it's shy of where we're trying to hit. And then option two is 85 and three and three B have 92. And, um, option, uh, four is a, uh, a little smaller because we use a single aisle and we double stack those vehicles. So we, we less, we had less space in the parking, but it's a little inefficiency there of the trucks being stacked up like that. So, uh, we get, I'm just going to go through some of the key points here. The parking is good in most of these. Where we're seeing on bulk storage, uh, which is the cold storage and option one, it's, there, there's not enough bulk storage area, 6,000. Option two is a little better. At option three and four, we do get the 15,000 square foot cold storage footprint building on there. And, um, you can see the square feet of paved area from option one to option four, where you would purchase more land does go up, but, um, it's used up. I mean, the, you do need that. We, we recommend you that you need more acreage to stockpile and to circulate onsite, create safer traffic patterns. And that's, you would go a whole acre up. So option, uh, four does not include the land costs on that. I also will say that I, I did not scope out costs for environmental hazards, um, or haven't done any geotack soils. I, I'm assuming these are normal soils, but, um, that's something in your next phase, whatever option you pick, I recommend you start analyzing some of these variables. And, uh, I'm getting close to the end here. And this is a, a, a rating that we did of the options and we took some criteria that are key per garage. And those criteria are traffic circulation, efficient cold storage, efficient yard storage, the costs of the options, the efficiency that you gain and the room for expansion and then compatibility with land use and urban design. And we went through those options and at the bottom you'll see that option one, uh, we had a rating, a weighting on those. So I'll look at the second number at 16.7, option two, five, option three, 19.5. And then it jumps up and option four, 26.6. And then, um, option, the new option at 36.1, which is about optimal. So that's, um, that's how we, we ranked them. And I'm just going to, um, finish up on our conclusions that the 5.8 acres is not enough to house your optimal operations for building and yard activities. We recommend four, the 6.8 does help a lot, 10 would be better for your site activities. That triangular cut in your yard is really inefficient for yard layout and circulation and it creates some tight drive clearances. All of the options except for, uh, option four, don't have enough yard storage and much less snow piling storage. And adding that one acre, making it rectangular does increase efficiency of the design and adds more circul- uh, better circulation, more storage. Uh, we do recommend option four as far, as it's staying, but we're cognizant that just to create a larger industrial building in downtown and a larger paved area. And I, I've been through this with other municipalities, it taking property off the private tax rolls too. So all of these options have construction phasing sequences to them, uh, that I, I haven't dug in far enough that may affect the pricing too. And I think in your next phase, I think where you're going to hop to and what phases, how much time this is going to take, how many construction packages would, would this occur over? And, and then the new site allows for sufficient space, room for growth, better traffic patterns and long-term compatibility with the city's growth pattern. So we recommend finally, the next step is that the city, uh, select one option to add the current site and then advance that to a preliminary design level. So you can flesh out the environmental, the soils, utilities, um, the demolition costs, the sequencing costs, uh, look at planning, engineering issues around that site. And, uh, we also, if the city chooses, if you wanted to compare both, do both in tandem, look at a new site option, look at staying an option for it. A lot of my clients have done. And advance them to certain points, so you flesh them out, so you can make a, a full, uh, decision on that, informed decision. I mentioned developing construction phasing plans already and reviewing the engineering aspects of each one. Uh, look at the extenuating conditions you may have for soils and cleanup issues who meet with city planning and zoning and then develop the detailed cost estimates. And then finally, look at how much time are we talking between these two options? One option may be able to done quicker than the other. Maybe one requires more phases of time. So that all should be looked at for you to make an informed decision. So I'm just going to wrap it up here and, um, saying that it's, this is a long journey. I've been through a lot of municipalities and counties on a new garage. This is the first step. Uh, what I'd like to remind my clients to keep in mind that, uh, while it's a big investment, it's, it will enhance the efficiency of the streets division with workflow efficiency, productivity and safety for the workers, better asset control and security of your yard, better supervision, communication lines with the staff. And, um, obviously you better building performance, energy wise, long-term. Uh, this building ideal, if you do it, would last 70 years, just like this current one has, get another 70 years out of that and sustainability too. So, uh, I'm just, um, as you look forward, there, one thing else you may want to do is look at other garages and, and see what is state of the art or public works garages, you know, on a spacing, the lighting, the materials that are used, the layouts and the amenities for the crews. So I, I am going to end it on that. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the council? Mr. Bennett?
First of all, thank you. It was a great presentation, one of the better ones I've seen in my tenure, uh, very, uh, detailed, I thought.
Thank you.
Gave us a lot of information, but this is more for the, uh, the council. I don't think anybody is thinking we're going to do this in any other than eight years or so. I, I don't think that viable with, uh, what we've got going on now. Ron could jump on that a little bit better than I, but we have to plan for this and, uh, and I, you know, just what I've seen here is I certainly would like to see that to a new site where you have more storage and so on and so forth. But the question and, and you probably, this isn't for you, but I would like to see a honest appraisal of that land. We were told a few years ago how valuable that land was. And I'm always leery since we went with the fire department and we found out we didn't get anywhere near what we thought we were in city hall eventually do. And, and I don't know how, who's out there that can give us close to that, but we need a number, what that land is worth and then we can fit this in. But I agree that, uh, staff should be looking at other facilities elsewhere and, uh, you know, I toured as, as many of you have and there's a lot of deficiencies there. Air quality, when they start the trucks in the main garage, I mean, there's not enough air turnover. I mean, I'm sure that's not up to code. I don't think it's close to it. So my, my theory always was if you're going to spend a bunch of money, if you got to spend a little bit more, do it right. So that's, I want to give more information, but, uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? No? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, next up, item L, presentation, the annual, uh, TID update overview by, presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
Thank you. We promised you three annual informational reports a year, one on debt, one on TID, one on fund balance. This is the annual, uh, TID report. Um, so what I have prepared is just like a two-minute overview because there are some new council members who may not be as familiar how, how it works. Um, then I'll kind of go through how each TID is doing, what our plans are for it. I'm here for the math. Josh is here. He's, you know, he's great with all the parcels and the developments and what's going on in each TID and where they are. If you have any questions on that, uh, go right ahead. So just a two-minute overview, you know, TIF, TIF is the financing method we use and TID, TID is the physical land that's in the district. Um, I like to use the civil example of just an empty field. So if we own a bunch of land somewhere, completely empty, it has $0 assessed value, generating $0 in tax. We want to convert it into a industrial park. So what we do is we get the okay of the joint review board and the joint review board is made up of all the taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, the tack, the school district and a member at large, because they're going to donate their share of taxes to this too. Uh, we put together a project plan with estimated cost for infrastructure, financing, possible incentives. And most typically, we're talking about an empty field, we borrow the money upfront. So we put in the services, we put in the streets, we put in the infrastructure. So we start, you know, kind of a negative position. Then what happens is those parcels in the TID are assigned to the TID. So they're no longer on the city tax roll per se. And then, then any tax revenue generated from those parcels flows directly into the TID. Um, so then as business moves in, the assessed value in that TID goes up. We collect the money from not only the city, but all the other taxing jurisdictions. It flows into the TID and then very long-term pays itself back. We dissolved the TID and now we, where we had an empty field, we have a business park, industrial park with a lot of good assessed value and it goes back on the tax roll. So that's really just a really rough overview. Um, you know, some are different, you know, like the forward bank one, we get to those site specific, or there might be some existing value in the TID and that's all taken into consideration. So a couple of things to think of, you know, when we structure incentives, when we're talking people out of incentives, we like to, uh, really try to use a pay-go method, pay as you go. So instead of handing the money upfront, we try to say, you know, as it's developed, as you hit certain benchmarks, as your assessed value goes up, you know, we'll pay it over a series of years and kind of share in the risk and the rewards there. Uh, and then from the accounting point of view, think of TID as just a standalone entity. You know, it's got its own, own properties in there, its own parcels, its own debt. We charge it admin costs now, we look through the legal bills and so they're kind of paying their own way as we go. And ultimately though, the TID is the responsibility of the city. So even though the other jurisdictions are involved, if it would go bad, say we, our, our empty field stays empty, you know, it is ultimately responsibility of the city to pick up that tab and we haven't had that happen, uh, but it's a possibility. Uh, what that does do is it kind of creates a, not a conflict, but different points of view on the GRB says, we should close everything as soon as possible because then it goes back on tax roll. And we as the city say, we'll just hold it open just a little bit longer because, you know, we're the ones at risk. So we want to make sure that, um, it stays and donors to other TIDs as we go. So that's my, uh, two-minute, uh, overview. Um, so let's take a look at our slides. Any questions, just jump right in. All right. So we have this in your packet. Um, so what we have for each TID is just kind of a, a PDF map of where it's at and then a little discussion on where it's at financially. So the first one we have is TID number two, which is the old Purdy building. So it's kind of a single site TID. This one's been paid off for a few years and what we're doing with TID number two is any money it collects, we're donating it to TID seven. So it can, is allowed to donate to TID five or TID seven. So each year, the $111,000 you see there, uh, more or less, we, you know, they pay, they pay some admin fees also, we donate the rest to, uh, TID seven, which has a little bit more debt. So we could close this one at any time, but like I said, we keep it open to help out the other TID. When we do close this one, there is an affordable housing extension, sort of, they just keeps around here, that we can keep it open one additional year and use the proceeds for affordable housing options. And that's something we'll, we'll bring back when we get closer to closing this one. TID four is this downtown area, including the old city hall. Um, so the old, old city hall. Um, so the number there that I have for projected 2020 increment, that's the amount of additional taxes that it's generated from the time it was set up. And so keep that in mind, all, all taxing jurisdictions taxes are flowing in there. We're only just a small part of that. So our taxes are about 37% of the total growth. So even if there's no growth in this TID, remember that the tax is raising their taxes, the, the county, you know, everyone else is. So even if there's no growth and we don't raise our tax rate, the other jurisdictions are, so there's additional growth in the TID because of that. Uh, TID four, gosh. So after we did all our adjustments, TID four started with a significant amount of cash, about $1.4 million. So what we did with that cash is we paid down some of their debt and then we donated a, a pretty good chunk to TID seven in 2019, which had some negative cash. So, uh, this is, uh, doing well. It's got a fair amount of debt yet, but the increment it's generating is easily paying its debt. TID five is the Mill Creek Business Park. Um, just doing great, uh, you know, just a great success story, um, was the kind of the proverbial empty field. Um, so right now it, if you look at the increment there and the computer aids, it's generating almost $900,000 a year in increment. Uh, and in 2021, their debt drops to about 40,000. So they're just, it's cash flowing, uh, really well. So this one has a negative cash balance. Um, but, you know, we project by 2023, even though it's got $3 million, uh, a little over $3 million to pay, by 2023, we think it'll be, um, break even. So Dental Crafters is expanding, um, candidate for early, early closure. We can't change it to a donor district. Um, so we'd have to look at other options, uh, close it, um, reopen it, you know, with some, some remaining parcels, but that one's just doing great. All right. It's seven. Del Stone Industrial. Uh, so we had PCA come online this year. Um, so that really jumped the increment up quite substantially. Uh, there's a lot of nice businesses in that one. Um, like I said, we donated some funds in, we finished the rail spur project. Um, so this is the one we're using TID two to kind of help, help pay off some of its debt in the long run. Um, but like all the other ones, it cash flows real positively. TID nine, uh, used to be Hertle Manor, now the Ford Financial Bank, kind of a single site, um, TID. Uh, there's not a lot of room for growth there, um, but it's increment exceeds its debt pretty well. Again, another positive cash flow. TID 10 is the mall. TID 10 is the mall area. And recall, when we draw the TID maps, if I back up, if you're familiar with this area, it not only includes the mall, but areas around it. So what it's pulling in for values, you know, it's pulling in McDonald's, that BMO Bank, Pizza Hut Simplicity and those kind of things. So we don't have a lot of debt in the, into this TID, it's about $60,000 a year. And we've got potential for mall redevelopment. And so we'll kind of just keep an eye on, on this one. But like I said, all the other businesses near it help it out. And then TID 11, is there a new quick trip by Highway 10? Again, not a lot of debt, about $60,000, increment's good and should pay off. So to recap, you know, TID two, we're just kind of holding open. TID four's got a fair amount of debt, but doing well. TID five's doing great. TID seven's doing really well and nine, 10, 11 are, are newer, you know, opportunities for development, not a lot of debt. So all in all, very well. I presented to the Finance Committee, is there's a required audit for these kids as we go along at certain points of their life? We just completed three of those audits. There was no findings, per se, in any of the audits, but we did, when we were working through some of the procedures, we did find that TID seven, way back in 2009, because some of these audits were a little overdue, that TID seven was shorted, about $175,000 in that year. So that's going to require a transfer from the Debt Service Fund to TID seven, which is good for TID seven, obviously. Not good for our Debt Service Fund. But other than that, the audits were clean, the reports are on file, if anyone's got, got any questions about those. We still have a few of those audits outstanding for TID two and five that will initiate.
Future potential uses, I don't know if you wanted to, Josh, want to talk a little bit about future things we could do?
Yeah, one of the things that's, that are, is on the EDB's budget list for 2021 is to create a new industrial TIF, next to Yellowstone Industrial Park, which would be the farmland behind the egg research center. That's been planned for a long time, but now is the time to, to look at doing that. One of the options would be is we could carve out a chunk of the land in TID seven that is just south of Yellowstone Industrial Park, that's about 16 acres or so. Because that's undeveloped, we can carve that out and then add it to this other TIF or to, to the farmland and make that TIF a larger TIF. So it'd be a two-step process and that's something that we'd be budgeting for in 2021. Right now, we don't have much in the way of, of new industrial land for heavy industrial businesses. We have, we, we have a lot of land in Mill Creek Business Park, about half of that is owned for commercial, the other half is owned for light industrial or industrial parks. So, and we don't have large parcels. So we'd be missing out on opportunities for new businesses with larger parcels to come in, like a PCA, we don't have enough room for another PCA. So that would be one option. Another option that we're looking at with the Economic Development Board is mixed-use TIFs. How can we utilize mixed-use TIFs for new, newly-planted residential housing? So that's a really good opportunity to provide some, a funding mechanism to put a new infrastructure for housing. It's just a matter of finding a strategic location that has both a mix of commercial and industrial land along with some green space for residential housing. So we've identified some areas, we're going to talk it through with the EDB and then hopefully bring some back to council. But, and then as Ron said, as some of these TIF districts are closing, I think 2023 is going to be a really exciting opportunity for us with TID five possibly closing, but also there's others that could close early. We could utilize some of those extra revenue, additional year of increment to address our affordable housing situation. So that could be a pretty substantial amount, given the increments in some of those TIDs. So that's really what we're looking at kind of coming forward pretty soon.
And the last thing for a question is, you know, Josh and I, with all the current information, we've built like a forecaster for our TID so we can model any changes or any possible incentives or, you know, those kind of things. So we try to stay on top of it anytime we get new information, but I've said they're doing well. So open up for any questions you have.
Questions from the council, Mr. Wagner.
Ron, one of the disincentives, I think, to closing out a TIF district is, I think the state says in that first year, we can only recapture 50% of the assessed value. How long is that restriction now? How long before we capture 100% of the assessed value?
I'd, I'd have to look, I don't know off the top of my head, but that is correct. In the first year, we can only recapture half of it.
So that, that, that actually cost us money to, to close out a TIF if we, if we, if we deprive ourselves of the increment and the increment is more than we're going to collect on the tax, maybe.
Maybe, because once it gets back to zero, you know, so say we're in a situation where we're close to zero, it goes one, one year longer and we collect a whole bunch of money that puts it at a surplus, we don't keep the surplus, we distribute it to the taxing jurisdictions pro rata. So, so yes and no? It depends.
Anything further from the council? All right, seeing none, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Item N, second reading of ordinance, I'm sorry, M, second reading of ordinance number 1438, rezoning property located at 913 West North Street, parcel 33-02105, from SR4 Single Family Residential to TR62 Family Residential, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is the second reading of this ordinance. The ordinance is to rezonate parcel, it's about 0.92 acres in, near the medical complex off of North Street. It's a rezona from SR4 to TR6, which would allow a single-family and duplex uses in that area. This is adjacent to mostly a single-family, but the, the neighborhood has a number of other duplexes in the area. The comprehensive plan shows this as medium-density residential, so this is compatible with our comprehensive plan. This was, there was a public hearing held in July where there was no public comment. With that, staff would recommend approval of ordinance 1438.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1438, motion by Mr. Butky, second by Mr. Wagner? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pageal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler.
Thank you, item N, second reading of ordinance number 1439, rezoning property located in the 2900 block between Pop Avenue and West Veterans Parkway, parcel 250-2602-362-9983, from CMU, Community Mixed Use, SR4 Single Family Residential, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you again, Mayor. This, this property is about, about 1.2 acres in size, kind of an odd shape, kind of has a triangle piece carved out of the west end of it. There would be an opportunity to, once this is rezoned from Community Mixed Use, which is our general commercial district to SR4, to subdivide it up to two to three homes, which we've talked about many times, we have a need for a single-family housing. The surrounding area to, to the west is, is also zone single-family, to the, to the east is a zone for multifamily and is a, is a five-plex multifamily development. This area is in the, listed in the comprehensive plan as new neighborhood mixed use, which is pretty much primarily a single-family area, but would, would include a mix of other types of housing and even some commercial. As we talked about in the first reading, that there is no access off of Veterans Parkway, so this has limited commercial appeal. Has been zoned for, for commercial for some time with no development. There was a public hearing at this, July 21st Plan Commission meeting with no public comment. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance 1439.
Thank you very much, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1439? Motion by Mr. Whitzel, second by Mr. Fire, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pageal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler.
And motion carries, thank you. Item O, second reading of ordinance number 1441, amending chapter 18 of the Marshfield Municipal Code, section 18-6334 and 5, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. During a recent conditional use permit request, we were looking at our code and trying to, one of the uses was a junkyard salvage yard in the, in the business, in the industrial park off of Fourth Street. And when we were going through that, we're realizing that one of the requests was an auto salvage dealership, our auto salvage dealer. And in order to do that, they have to handle hazardous materials and that was not allowed by our zoning code, even though the use was allowed. So part of that request was to look at the code and make, recommend a code amendment to make sure that there's some consistency in our code. And so what, what we had previously was, in, in each of those three land uses, which was for salvage or junkyards, recycling and waste disposal and standard mineral processing, we, the limitations on hazardous materials was stated that operations shall not involve the onsite holding, storage or disposal of hazardous materials as defined by state statutes in any manner. That's difficult because even auto repair businesses could handle those such materials in, in a commercial area, for example. So it seemed, it was very, there was an inconsistency in our code and this would correct it. So what we're proposing to do is change that language in all three of those districts to, any onsite holding, storage or disposal of hazardous materials shall meet all local, state and federal requirements and the business shall acquire and maintain all necessary permits, licenses and registrations. This was presented to the Plan Commission with a public hearing on July 21st and there was no public comment at that time. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance 1441.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1441? Motion by Mr. Pageal, second by Mr. Rosendich, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pageal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler.
And that motion carries, thank you. Item P, discuss possible ordinance to allow chickens within the city of Marshfield, presented by Tom Butky, Council Number District Number Nine.
Good thing you can't see me smiling under the mask. I had a couple residents ask about the, if they could have chickens and I gave them the background that it was brought up before and Steve alluded that to in his information. So I'm bringing it up and I would, Bob from ordinance, if Bob wants to talk about it or to give us your feelings on it. I know it's worked in some cities with very little problems and some others have had problems. So I'll let Bob, I'll, I'll direct the people that contacted me if you're.
I don't know if I can be negative, to be honest.
Yeah, be honest.
Because we don't have, we haven't had chicken, we've never had a chicken ordinance. We haven't had any fowl ordinance. I guess to be premature and saying that we shouldn't have them because of a perception that may or may not exist would be crazy. This is just to start discussion, I think there is a lot more discussion that needs to be had. Just running through it really quickly, there was nothing talking about any type of DAT cap type of permit application, it's not a permit, it's an application to have livestock at a, at a residence and it's there to protect health of the animal as well as people. There are some types of issues that can come up with chicken illnesses that the state would intervene and help out if there was a sudden illness or a sudden death of a chicken that we wouldn't know anything about, they would be there to help us out. So I, to tell you it's a bad thing, I don't, I don't think I could do that. But I think it deserves at least some more attention and some more research into what other municipalities have done. And there's a lot of good things out there that other municipalities have done, like Wasan Rapids specifically, Rapids is really good. I think you guys all got that, I don't know, but it's, it's a good one. It would be worth, I guess, bringing up, talking about if we're going to actually allow it.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Mr. Mayor?
You know, there, the last time I, when we talked about that, the chicken ordinance, I don't know how many years ago, but it's quite extensive what you have to do. I was always concerned the first time is, I'd be blunt, some of the junk properties, maybe having the ones having some of this, but it's, it's, it's quite the application that they have to abide by. So I would like for, get more information on this and, and bring it back sometime and let's vote on it at some particular time after we get some more of the facts. I mean, Steve wrote some good stuff in our, in stuff for this meeting, so I would ask everybody to look at that and if you have questions for another meeting or this one, bring it up and put it down the agenda to vote sometime.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Any other questions on this topic from the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item Q, request to authorize Mayor to appoint council members to the city negotiating team for collective bargaining with the police union. This is actually presented by Steve Bark.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been city administrator here for, it's my 10th year and we always have to have bargaining teams to negotiate contracts with the police and fire unions and it's kind of an ongoing process because it's typically three-year contracts, sometimes less. Our goal in recent years has been to get a committee made up of the following members, the mayor, one or two council members, the city administrator, the human resources director, finance director, the fire or police chief, depending upon what union we're talking about, and then a member of the fire and police commission sits in on that group as well. Typically, we've had a challenge getting, you know, one or two members, we've been able to do it, but it, it always hasn't come with necessarily people volunteering, but we've always had at least one council representative, sometimes two on the committee, which is our goal. This year, I put it out there and four members of this body showed interest, willing to volunteer to sit on that group. So it was a good problem to have, it brought the question, how do we narrow that down to just the two members to move forward? Looking at section 3-67 of the municipal code, it refers to special committees being appointed by the mayor subject to approval by the council. The question came up, but I checked with the city attorney, would this constitute a special committee? It's, it's not a committee of sorts, it's a bargaining team that meets, you know, as necessary. You could certainly make the argument, it's a special committee. And in consultation with the city attorney, he suggested, and I think it makes a lot of sense, to bring it to this body and say, rather than to get into whether or not it technically fits the, the category of special committee, see if the council would be willing to authorize the mayor to make appointments and, and go for it that way, as if it was in fact a special committee. So that is the question before you tonight, would you be willing to authorize the mayor to appoint two members of the council from the four who have shown interest to serve on the negotiating team to bargain a new contract with the police union effective January 1st of 2021?
Steve, just to clarify that, even if, if the mayor would make an appointment, the council still has to approve it.
I think, city attorney, would you care to comment on that?
I mean, that is what that section of the code basically says, that the mayor can appoint. I, I don't see in that that it was required, that there would be a specific approval. That's a little bit different than a standing committee where there's approvals, so that's.
Okay.
So technically, if that was done, I don't recall that being a provision within that specific sub, you know, subcommittee provision, so I don't think that that's the case.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Butky?
I would make a motion to have the council pick two of the four people that volunteered.
That's the motion for the council to pick two of the four? Is there a second to the motion, Mr. Henler? There's a second to that motion, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, then roll call vote?
Fire? Pageal?
No.
Rosendich?
No.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries seven to three.
I guess the question then becomes, and again, maybe it's a question for the city attorney, you've seen in your packet the four individuals that have shown interest, Adam Fisher, Rebecca Spiros, Nick Pageal and Ed Wagner. I don't know if there's the ability to do it now or if this would have to come at the meeting on August 25th. I'd like to expedite this, but certainly we need to follow whatever the.
I think it, I think it's been, you know, noticed enough that a selection could be made if they wanted to proceed at this time. If they felt that it would be better to have, you know, a separate meeting where it's noticed up specifically, that's what they're going to do, that's fine. But I don't think we're out of line in terms of notice if they.
I'd like to expedite this, but certainly we need to follow whatever the.
I think it, I think it's been, you know, noticed enough that a selection could be made if they wanted to proceed at this time, if they felt that it would be better to have, you know, a separate meeting where it's noticed up specifically that that's what they're going to do, that's fine, but I don't think we're out of line in terms of notice if they would make an appointment based on that. The other procedure would have anticipated that the mayor make an appointment, and that would have been the end, so.
So with that, then, can someone make?
They, they can, if they chose to do it. Somebody could make that appointment now, or in the alternative, if, if not, then you'd see it on the next agenda.
So if you want, you can make a motion now, and if you want to wait until the next agenda, that's fine. Mr. Butke?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Spiros to be on the bargaining team.
There's a motion to appoint Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Spiros to, the special committees are second. Mr. Henler? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
No.
Paychel?
No.
Rosenditch?
No.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries seven to three.
Item R, request to approve appointment of Aaron Howard, 402 West Park Street, to fill a vacant position on the historical preservation committee that was vacated by Allison Hawks. The appointment expires in 2022. Believe there is a email in your packet from Aaron, there's no action required tonight, so it's information only. If you have questions on that appointment, I'll take those now, and otherwise, we would go on to the next item. All right. Item S, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin Statute Chapter 19.851G, inferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, review of potential legal claims arising out of the police department. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion by Mr. Bargender, is there another hand waiting? And a second by Mr. Rosenditch, seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Paychel?
Yes.
Rosenditch?
Yes.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?[1770.63]